Okay.
Excellent.
Okay. Uh, good evening, everyone. This is the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Eastland Middle Planning Board. Uh, so in attendance, uh, George Kingston, uh, Pete Punderson and myself, uh, John Torscha. Um, so first I just wanna see if anybody else besides LCAT is recording, uh, this meeting. If so, just please identify yourself. Um, is there anybody in the audience there?
No.
Okay, um, seeing none, we will move on to the September twentieth, twenty twenty-two open session. Um, meeting minutes, so everyone should have gotten a copy of those. Um, are there any revisions or edits or things that people then, uh, board members have?
Nope.
My commotion to approve the minutes second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote because I am on Zoom. Um, so, uh, George?
Yes.
Uh, Pete?
I.
And I am an I as well. So that motion carries, uh, three to zero. Um, so, uh, George, acting as our clerk tonight, uh, would you be able to read the first item?
Case SPRW twenty twenty-two dash thirty-three. Request the site plan. Do you waiver for the conversion of an existing building from a repair garage to a single tenant physical therapy office space? That fourteen to sixty center square assesses parcel ID twenty-seven dash one seven six dash zero on a zero point two plus or minus acre lot in the business zoning district. Applicant is Kevin Jennings, seventy-three Chestnut Street, Springfield, Massachusetts.
Okay, is the applicant or a representative of the applicant here this evening?
Yes.
Perfect. Um, well, just, uh, give us kind of a, uh, description of what you're looking to do here. Um, hours of operation, um, things of that nature. Um, just, yeah, a quick narrative.
So, um, so we're gonna.
You can turn the chair.
Yeah, sure. Um, purchased the property in, uh, June of this year and, um, we're gonna convert the, what was the gas station to a, um, a single tenant physical therapy, um, office. Uh, hours of operations, seven A to seven P, Monday through Friday. Um, three employees max with a anticipated ten to eleven um, people or person, uh, visitor, uh, throughout the twelve-hour day. So, one-ish per hour, average.
Okay. Uh, does the board have any questions for the applicant?
Uh, yeah, I, we looked at this o- this over and my feeling is that this should be done as a site plan review rather than a waiver because we're changing the parking plan and we need to have, um, that recorded on a new site plan. Okay, uh, basically, we're, we're changing something on the exterior of the parking plan specifically. And we need to make sure that that's recorded so that isn't changed in the future without notice. So it, I mean, I think it's a great use of the place. I think it's much improved, but I would like to see a site plan that we can record so that we know where the parking plan actually is going to be.
That was, I think, uh, provided today.
Well, you, but that, that's as a waiver. It's not as a site plan.
Yeah, so the site plan review process is a little bit different. We have to go through a public hearing process. Um, and I think I kind of discussed that with you prior to, um, we just need it by a certain deadline and, in order to do that and we didn't get the materials by that deadline to make it public hearing tonight. So, um, we can certainly get it on the next agenda for.
Do I have to re-submit an application?
It would have to be a site plan application.
Rather than a waiver.
Got it, yeah.
Okay, and it's just because of the, you're gonna change the parking and there's no, there's no recorded parking plan. That's gonna look like what you have. So that has to be in place.
Got it.
Okay?
Okay.
Which then you have to have a public hearing, but I mean, a lot of why.
So, so the same plans that we submitted for this meeting are acceptable for that meeting?
Yeah, they should be, but with the review process, they you go to other department heads for comments, so the Department of Public Works may have revision requests or something like that, but other than that, um, they should be good for the board, though.
As a, huh? Just a board of formality.
Sure, yeah, okay.
I'm trying to make it difficult, but.
No, 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 and it, um, anything else aside from parking that we need to, what should think about?
Not that I, I don't think so. Maybe George does.
Unless you're changing entryways, or, you know, when the doors are gonna be or something like that, or yeah. So, yes, so two of the garage doors, existing garage doors are gonna be storefront glass.
Right.
And then one is gonna be a main entrance and it shows that on that.
Is that where the entrance is today or is it?
No.
Okay, so that, that, that's also shown on the plan and it's another reason for having it recorded. Okay.
Sure.
So then. And, and, you know, personal with this, but we've seen before. Things change hands, new people go in, you know, somebody else comes in, they, they start changing things and it doesn't the site plan we have doesn't reflect it. So it's hard to go back in and say, no, you can't do that. You gotta let us know, you know?
Okay, so you're using the existing door that's there in that, in that same spot?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
And that we're.
So there's one side door, there's no front door.
Okay, okay.
So we're gonna make a front door and have, um, as you'll see.
The doors on the side to get into.
The doors on the side, correct.
Yeah.
So we're gonna have a handicap accessible.
Right.
You know, strike.
So that, yeah.
Line spot.
Great.
Um, for the main entrance.
Which makes sense for physical therapist.
Correct, correct, correct.
Yeah. Okay.
Other than that.
Okay, anything else that, uh, appears as a question or a concern?
Not, not to me, not to me. It's like, I, I looked this over and.
Cause we've got some time.
Yeah.
Constraints with.
Yeah, I understand. I think the plan, the plan looks good. Um, and as I, I mentioned, I really like reduction in traffic, we're gonna see into the circle from what we have now. And the place has been kind of blown slightly for a long time.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so you're gonna have windows there?
So the two, there's three bay doors.
Right.
Uh, two of those will be, you know, big, um, storefront glass window types like the bank next door.
Nice.
And then, uh, the third one will be that with a, with an entrance.
Okay, good. Good. So what's the proper procedure here, Billy? We withdraw the request for site plan review and submit?
Yeah, I would say it could, I mean, the waiver could be either denied or withdrawn and then.
I would suggest that the applicant withdraw.
Yeah, prejudice.
Sure, I'll withdraw.
Yeah.
And then you would have to submit a full site plan review application.
Package with the same.
It, it's a different process and a different application, but the site plan. Um, I don't know, there's a site plan review or a site plan checklist. I don't know that this necessarily meets all of those requirements. Um, I'd have to kind of go through that and double check, but and the, the full site plan, the existing conditions plan. Um, looks like it, it would be pretty good. There's a lot of notes on here and what's up there. Um, I mean, it's typically a full package, like a, a lot of pages, so.
The one, the one thing.
Well, I, I have full, I have full-size plan.
Yeah.
That I can.
Full-size plan.
That I can submit with.
Yeah.
Nothing more beyond that. I mean, there's.
Yeah.
Or nothing more to show.
Yeah, the only thing DPW might want to see is something on drainage, but yeah, this is, you're not increasing impervious from what it was. So the drainage is pretty much existing.
Correct.
Okay, so I don't see, I don't know how DPW's ever explained that, but.
Yeah.
We'll get fire's comments and DPW comments.
Yeah, that's my only concern. I mean, I, I know, cause I know you're on a timeline. I mean, in terms of our submission, though, I think these would be good. And with the full-size set.
Full-size set, okay.
How long will you need to, to get back to us? How long will it take you to?
I can re-submit tomorrow.
Okay.
I have the plans.
Our deadline is Thursday for the next one.
This Thursday?
Thursday, yeah.
I'll submit.
So, yeah, you could.
Okay. Do, do I need to include all of the, um, like from the, from the Treasury Department and all that?
Yeah.
Re-do all of that?
Yes, I think the only additional thing would be the abutters notification.
Okay.
That was, isn't required in a waiver.
Okay.
Um, that's obtained through the assessor's office, so.
Um, I think we had that done.
And then. I don't know if I've seen that come across my desk, cause we usually get notified if someone submits that request, so. Um, I would, I would just have a check order.
Sure.
But I don't think we have it a part of the application.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question now, so.
Is that appropriate?
The certified abutters, yeah, we just needed. But that's odd that they didn't. Maybe they didn't.
Well, I was going to originally apply for the site plan until I missed the deadline.
Got you. Um, we might have it, it just might not be in my materials tonight, so. Um, but if you just submit that page with the application.
Will be covered?
Yeah, you should be good. Um, I don't wanna make any promises, but like right now, but I mean, we'll, we'll make sure it's complete before. Uh, we'll work with you.
Okay, before Thursday?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Take care.
Okay, uh, next item. Uh, case site twenty twenty-two dash oh-nine, request for site plan review of construction with approximately eighteen hundred square foot office building with associated parking and driveway at a combined point seven nine plus or minus acre parcel to be recorded including North Main Street Lot One, assessors parcel ID thirteen dash nine dash one, Free Purvey Street, assessors parcel ID thirteen dash eight dash three, Seven Purvey Street, assessors parcel ID thirteen seven five, Purvey Street Lot Six, assessors parcel ID thirteen six six. In the commercial zoning district, applicant Jonathan Cerda, Two Depot Road, Leverett, Mass, oh one oh five four.
You should see, I think Jonathan.
An applicant, uh, or representative of the applicant here.
I think Jonathan's on Zoom too.
Yeah, Jonathan's on Zoom. Uh, I was not sure if you're catching his audio. My name is Phil, we're playing construction and the owner of the plan.
How we doing this evening, Mr. Plant?
Good, and you?
Very good.
Should be on quick. Yeah. Pretty nice. Okay, Jonathan can't, he can hear the entire meeting, he can hear what's going on, but he's not getting audio to where he can speak. Do you mind if I put him on speakerphone?
Um.
He's trying to get through that.
I, I mean, that's, that's the board.
Yeah, that's fine by me. Yeah, as long as, as, as long as I can hear it, um, we can give it a go.
Jonathan, are you there?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay, I can, I can hear that.
You hear him now?
All right, could you speak up as loud as possible?
Hi, this is Jonathan. Can you guys hear me?
Oh, that's better.
There you go. So.
Yes.
I apologize for this. I, uh, am not getting any microphone or audio on my end, but I can hear you guys, see you guys fine, so. Uh, I was trying to solve this before the meeting, but unfortunately I couldn't, but basically today I just wanted to go over the comments that were made in regards to uh, planning board meeting. This was on nine twenty twenty-two, so the Purvey Street from the planning board from Public Works that, uh, provide location and depth of existing sewer main to ensure proper catch on a proposed sewer service. Is everybody getting that? Can you guys hear me?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, yeah, I can hear you fully.
I just wanted to double check that you're here. So with the revised set of plan that I sent out last week, I sent out a PDF. And in those plans, I have the proposed sewer service connection as well as the inver elevation from the information that was available on the DPW website as well as measurements that were taken out in the field. From that, we're able to assume the sewer service elevation as well as add that to the plans, inver elevation and swivel pipe. So in the new set of plans, that comment has been addressed.
Okay.
Comment number two, oh, sorry, do anybody have any questions?
No, no, no.
Okay. So for comment number two, the applicant to submit an illicit discharge statement to DPW prior to discharge of any stormwater. An illicit discharge statement has been made and this will require Bill, the owner, to sign it. After this meeting, I will send him a copy. You can sign it, date it, and send that back to the planning board. That would be comment number two.
Okay. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe those were the only two comments that they had provided to us on September the twentieth.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
I, I believe those were the only two comments that they, that the DPW had submitted to us.
Okay, great.
Um, well, first, I'm not sure, uh, with the pleasure of the board, but we can, um, perhaps maybe give, um, kind of a small, kind of a narrative of, of what you're looking to build exactly, um, for the audience and for those listening.
Okay, so the project includes the construction of an eighteen hundred square foot building with associated stormwater utility and layout of the project. This one includes twenty-five parking places with one ADA space. Now, the project may have future development on the other side, but for now, we're just taking into account the eighteen hundred square foot building that was proposed in the plan set.
Jonathan, just as a clarification, um, it's a eighteen hundred square foot footprint, two-story building, um.
Eighteen hundred square foot footprint.
So it's a thirty-six hundred square foot building.
Correct.
Yeah.
And what's the? For seasonal purposes.
Professional offices, yeah. So as I look at the plan, the building is on the right-hand side. So you were thinking maybe on the other side, you might put in the building?
Yeah, we were looking at, you know, possibly, um, originally we were talking about expanding the building and, um, you know, because of the shape of the lot, we thought it would be best to put a smaller building up here, also with the, you know, the limited work line. Um, we have more room in this back corner. Um, so we talked about possibly doing, um, a, a metal building back there, possibly doing a small gathering space, um, you know, for offices. So we're just, we're just not sure.
So total ingress egress is all completely on, uh, Purse Street, uh, it's looking like, so nothing, it'll be nothing on Main, North Main Street.
Correct.
I don't think that's accessible anyway, but.
What?
Isn't it wet between North Main and the?
No.
No, it's not accessible.
I thought, I thought it was wet.
The way it's behind it.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's been overgrown for so long, I have no idea.
We just cut it and it's already. It's already.
Remember looking at that with Mike, there are better fifteen years ago.
Were the old buildings on it still at that point? Where they gone?
They were gone. So, do the, yeah, do any of the members have, uh, any kind of specific questions or?
It, it looks like a good development of the, the property. I, I would suggest that, um, if chairman, that we might, uh, approve it, uh, subject to, uh, getting the, the permit assigned.
The illicit discharge?
Yeah. Submitted.
I'll send a copy of that to everybody.
Okay.
Yeah, we can make it, we can make a conditional on receiving that and approve it.
Yeah.
The only other comment we received from DPW as well was that there's a typo on one of the pages about Health Department approval and it says, uh, Oleo Health Department instead of Eastland.
I addressed that in the new set of plans, so I'll send out a PDF copy of that.
Okay, good, good, good.
Great.
Nick, in that case, I'll make a motion to, uh.
Do, do we wanna open up the, because it's a public hearing?
Public hearing, yeah, yeah, open up to the public.
We'll open up to the public, um, so is there anybody at this time from the public that would like to, whether on Zoom or in person, that would like to address the, um, application? Um, is there anybody in the audience there?
No.
No, okay. Um, so hearing none, we'll bring it back to the board and a motion to close a public hearing.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, um, roll call, I'll start with George.
Oh, yes, but we have to the condition.
No, this is closing.
I'll close it.
Aye.
And Pete, that's an I, and I am an I as well, so that passes three to zero. Um, so now.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan, uh, conditioned, conditioned on our receiving the signed illicit, illicit discharge permit. Second application.
And should we add anything about the revised typo or?
We have those plans.
Plans, okay, perfect.
But you can send out earlier this week.
Okay, um, all right, hearing, uh, motion's been made, motion's been seconded, hearing, uh, no other discussion, uh, uh, those, uh, in favor or those, uh, favor against, uh, roll call with George.
Aye.
Pete?
Aye.
And I am an I as well, uh, so that passes, uh, three to zero.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Oh, Josh, for the, uh.
That's not a problem.
No problems. Thank you, Jonathan. Look forward to seeing you.
Yeah, definitely.
Sometimes technology doesn't cooperate with us. All right, uh, the next item.
Uh, just the director's report, um, a couple of things tonight. The workshop, the public workshop we had for the, um, mixed-use overlay and, uh, the municipal vulnerability preparedness team talking about the, uh, the project they're working on, um, they, we had about five people show up, a couple council members show up. Um, turnout was a little less than we expected, um. So because of that, I've, um, hung up all of the materials that we had at that event, uh, at, right outside of our office at, at the, the planning department office and town hall, so. Um, members of the public can continue to give their input on that. Um, it's really it, an informative type survey, it's not necessarily something that um, is good in a electronic, electronic format. Um, I don't really have like a software that would work well with that, so. Uh, and it was really intended to have like a discussion, uh, aspect to it as well with myself and Nina being, um, present at that. Um, event as well, so that's the reason I don't have it in a electronic format, so I'm gonna try and send out a notification um, on our website and just get people to hopefully come into town hall and give us some comments. I'm gonna leave that up until uh, probably the next planning board meeting and then I'll bring it to our meeting, um, just to have it. I'm not gonna bring it for a discussion or, or a presentation or anything. I'm just gonna have it for the public if they wanna show up, so. Um, that's that. Does anyone have any questions or anything on that? Um, and then just a couple of upcoming things, the um, new building commissioner started and his name is David Gardner. Uh, he has extensive experience in other municipalities, uh, in that area, I think most recently South Hadley, if I'm correct on that, um. And so, uh, I met with him and discussed a couple of things in terms of zoning bylaws. Um, there were a couple of things that he had questions on that, um, kind of prompted us to think that we might need some, a couple of amendments, so, um, I'm gonna bring that to the next planning board meeting for us to discuss prior to, uh, any proposals being made, um, in a public hearing setting, so, um, just look for that at the next meeting.
Could you, uh, possibly ask him to come to the meeting so he can meet the planning board members?
Yeah, I can, uh, see if he's available for the, that night since we're gonna talk about that anyway.
You can invite him, you know.
Yeah.
So he gets to meet us.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Um, I'm meeting with him on Friday, so I'll talk to him about that. And, um, just another future thing, uh, December sixth, I'm planning on, um, putting together a report and a presentation for the board on the master plan implementation, um, what we've accomplished so far and the, uh, goals and stuff that we continue to work towards, so. Uh, and then also I'm gonna present that same information to the town council at their meeting on December thirteenth. Um, just so everyone's aware of that, but that's all I have for tonight.
Perfect.
I've received a lot of questions from the public and there's definitely some confusion. What are they gonna do? Take our downtown and build it into a city type of thing and all that, but the public really needs to join in with this discussion and better understand what could and may happen.
Yeah, and that was a big part of the, the workshop and, um, again, kind of disappointed that there weren't more people there, so we could kind of go through those, uh, questions and concerns that people may have.
You know, they, they certainly have been coming up to me and, you know, come to the meeting or.
Yeah.
Read the material.
Yeah.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. I've, I think I've gotten kind of some of the similar comments, um, I would have loved to have come. Unfortunately, I, I had another, uh, situation that came up, but, um, I think it's important because I think what the design of, you know, what we're considering here is to try and enhance the downtown. You know, I don't think it's going to become overnight or even in ten or twenty years, some type of, uh, city. I think it's gonna continue to retain, it will continue to, you know, retain its kind of small-town character, but enhancing it and, you know, addressing the things that our master plan and, and our master plan committee was able to put together and addressing those um, vulnerabilities that we have. Um, so I think, I think for, I, I would hope um, there's some more public engagement with that. So I think that's, I think that's good to hear, though, that at least, you know, those materials are getting out or being made available.
The chokehold on this whole thing is the rotary.
Yeah.
That's the problem and it's the most concern I get from everybody is you can't get through the rotary, you know, when the business is let out in the afternoon and, you know, if you bring restaurants and housing and all that, and how's that gonna flow through the towns? That seems to be the biggest comment from people that I receive. Which I don't really have any answer at this point.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I, I think that'll be something to definitely consider. I mean, I think it's, you know, when you consider the downtown, it's not just, um, right around the rotary, but even some of the major arteries.
Oh, yeah.
Shaker, Maple and all those, but.
We'll have to work on it.
Yep. So do we have, Billy, do you have anything major for our next meeting in two weeks or, um?
Uh, right now, the, the agenda has nothing on it other than, um, yeah, the, the bylaw discussion that I brought up, so.
We'll probably have the site plan. Which three thirty, Chestnut?
Well, that, that'll be at the public hearing, so that's not the next meeting. It'll be the following.
Okay.
And then, um, and yeah, three thirty, Chestnut would also be at that.
Okay, so that'll be a month then?
Now, yeah.
Well, it's, yeah.
The next meeting is in two and then two, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, November fifteenth is the exact date, so. And, yeah, so November first, there's nothing on the agenda currently, but I think we do have potentially one or two site plan review waivers for business certificates, unless our deadline passed already, I can't remember. I don't keep up that as much anymore, cause Nina does most of it, so.
Gotta keep her busy.
Yeah, um. Yeah, that's, the deadline's Friday, so we may get a couple more applications, so. But right now I don't have anything on there, so.
Awesome. Uh, is there any other items to bring up or?
I, make a motion to adjourn.
Second, which is made second and any further discussion, hearing none, uh, we'll do a quick roll call. Which is made second and any further discussion, hearing none, we'll do a quick roll call. George?
Yes.
Pete?
Excuse me, I.
And I am an I. All right, well, have, have a great evening, everyone.
Yeah, congratulations on your advancement.
Yes, thank you.